All right. It is good to be home. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm really happy. A former legislator, my wife Margaret Cheney is joining me here tonight. We're checking the mic here. Can't hear anything. Can you hear me?
No.
All right. I want to say thank you very much for coming, and I am delighted to be here. We're going to have a town hall meeting, and among other topics, and I'll start up, is the question of impeachment. But what I intend to do is talk for about 10 minutes, maybe a little less. And then I want to open up for questions and comments. And we've got two microphones, and the hope is that people who want to ask a question or who want to make a comment will keep it to about a minute, a little bit more, so everybody who has a desire to speak will have an opportunity to speak. So let me talk about the town meeting and my decision last week to say that I favor the articles of impeachment against the president. You know, it's amazing to be here in the House of Representatives in our state Capitol. The democracy that we have, it's very durable when you think about what this country is facing, what the state is facing, but it's also fragile. And it really rests on a couple of very simple propositions that are in our Constitution. No person is above the law. Every individual is subject to the rule of law, and there are no exceptions for that. The President of the United States has the same responsibility to the law as you and I do. And second, it's embodied in our Constitution that all of us are created equal. We're equally subject to the rule of law, but we equally have to respect that others are entitled to the protections of the law. And the two powers that go with being a member of the House of Representatives that I regard as the most significant is, one, the power of impeachment. The Constitution delegates in a somewhat undefined way that the members of the House of Representatives are given the authority through the Constitution from you by being elected to exercise that authority for the impeachment of an elected president. And of course, the second extraordinary power is the power to declare war, something that has withered unfortunately in recent years. I have been very hesitant and reluctant to come out in favor of impeachment, and it's for pretty straightforward reasons. You know, we have elections and they have consequences, and I believe very strongly in respecting the outcome of any election, because that's the voice of the people, that's the decision of the people. But I respect that, but I don't disregard the constitutional delegation of authority that the House of Representatives, when circumstances warrant, can take the action to proceed with impeachment. What I've seen with the conduct of President Trump that led me to this conclusion was a number of things. Number one, as I mentioned, above and beyond the reach of the law. Under our Constitution, with the separation of powers, the executive branch has significant authorities, but the legislative branch likewise does as well. And one of those authorities is to do oversight, to have accountability. Otherwise, when the president is completely unwilling to respond to congressional subpoenas, to produce witnesses, or to respond to congressional requests for documents, whether it's Kellyanne Conway coming in, who we subpoenaed to come in because the inspector general, not somebody from Congress determined that she was in violation of the Hatch Act, or when we're trying to get documentation to find out what is the policy with respect to people at the border who are in custody of the United States, and where seven children have died, and we want to get to the bottom of it. The president has an obligation to be responsive, to let your representatives in Congress hold the administration to account and give you the facts. And there has been a decision on the part of the White House to essentially disregard any legitimate request from Congress. Secondly, and really very most disturbingly, our whole country is based on the proposition that all of us are equal, and democracy depends on mutual trust and mutual respect. We have terrible, we have very challenging problems and contentious debates, and we're in this chamber where many of those fierce debates took place. But none of us have the right, least of all the highest elected official in the country, to attack people because of who they are. We can have a fight about what you stand for, and I may get criticized by some of you tonight for what I stand for. That's fair and square, but no one has the right to tell a person that they should go back to where they came from. And no one can tell someone that they're not welcome because of their religion. No one can do that, or their gender, or their ethnic heritage. And to be talking about Hispanic Americans or Hispanics attempting to escape from really dire circumstances. And we can have a debate about what the response is at the border, but what we can't do is call destitute people who are seeking a request for some help that they're rapists and criminals and bad people. The reason I came to the conclusion I did last week, and overcame really enormous reservation about taking this step because of my respect for the outcome of elections, whether I agreed with that outcome or not, was because I had become increasingly alarmed that the guardrails of our democracy are under attack. And I've seen it how, in this chamber, in over across the way in the Senate chamber where I served for 13 years, we can have debates, but we have to have mutual respect. And the guardrails of democracy require that whatever you believe, it can't include attacking somebody because of who they are. That's off limits. You know, this week, I go back to Washington tomorrow. Wednesday, Mr. Mueller is going to come in to the Judiciary Committee and also to the Intelligence Committee on which I serve and read the Mueller report. My hope is that Mr. Mueller is going to have an opportunity to fluidly explain what's in there, but there is an immense amount of undisputed information about contacts between Trump campaign high-level officials and Russian officials whose goal was to subvert our election. And then there is significant information in there about the repeated and concerted efforts on the part of the Trump administration to derail that investigation. So all of these things that have gone on for the 30 months of President Trump has been the holder of the highest office in the land, caused me, as I mentioned earlier, to conclude that our democracy and its guardrails, its safeguards, our constitutional order is in peril. And with the single voice that I have, and the single vote that I have, I feel it's my obligation to tell Vermonters the conclusion I've reached, whether some Vermonters agree or they don't. But this is the conclusion I have reached by being there firsthand, and you don't need to be there to see what's happening, but being there, you're shocked day in and day out, that there's not that respect for the Constitution that is so important and that we all share. So I'm going to stop here, and let's open it up for questions and comments, and I say again, thank you all for coming. Why don't you announce who you are and make your comment or ask your question? And by the way, the topic is whatever you want it to be.
So my name is Miriam Hansen, and I live in East Montpelier. And I totally agree that Trump needs to be impeached. He has needed to be impeached for a very long time. The issue to me is going to be whether impeaching him and how we do it and when we do it is going to be strategic or reactive. What is most important to me is that we win in 2020, and there are no rules with this individual. So it seems to be very dangerous to go into impeachment early, knowing the Senate will not impeach him, and giving him the opportunity to play it the way he is able to play us. He's been playing us for 30 months now. You're shocked, I'm sure. I think we've all been shocked. I was shocked when he got elected. But if we do it prematurely, we will play into his hands, and I'm very concerned that when I see everybody standing up in response to, you can't tell somebody to go back or you can't tell somebody to court it. That is exactly what he does, and it plays well with many people in this country. The only thing I care about is winning.
You know, you have made a very good point, and let me respond to that, because I wrestle with that. I wrestle with that as well. Number one, I've always believed that whatever decision any of us made on impeachment, it had to be not based on politics and calculation, but ultimately based on what we thought the Constitution required. And that's not to dismiss that urgency of winning. But secondly, let me be candid, because you're right about this. The man in charge of the Senate, Mitch McConnell, well, let me tell you about him. You know, most of us go into politics or we show up here tonight because we care about getting something done. You don't have to be an office holder to think the reason you put the energy in is you want to get something done. Well, here's what he wanted to do. His goal when he was Majority Leader and Barack Obama was the president was to make him a one-term president. That was his goal. It wasn't to help the country, it was to make him a one-term president. Well, guess what? He's got a new goal. He wants to make Donald Trump a two-term president. All right? So we're going to have a problem there. In the way that I see us having to do this, I've made my decision here about impeachment. But that is one very important issue, and President Trump has an extraordinary ability to command attention with the latest tweet. But we've got to have an agenda, and you know, we have a Democratic majority in the House, and I've been of this view since before the election. And let me just tell you some of the things that have passed. It doesn't necessarily get publicized because of the tweet or achieved, but so far, we've had two major bills that were inspired by things that were done in this legislature: on prescription drugs bringing down the cost, energy efficiency, where we got bipartisan support, net neutrality passed out of the House, sitting in the Senate. $15 minimum wage is what we passed last week. Gun safe, gun safe, this is the first one we've got. The Affordable Care Act improvements guaranteeing pre-existing conditions. Last week also, we cracked down on the ROBO costs. They're driving people crazy. We passed in the House a resolution to rejoin the Paris Climate Accord. We passed the Dream Act, so that people like Juan Conde, who's a medical student up at the University of Vermont, was brought here by his parents when he was eight years old and really knows no country other than this country, that he'd be allowed to stay here. That's all things that we have passed in the House. Now, we've got Mitch McConnell, all right? I mean, what is he? No, seriously, why do you not want to do these things? He won't even let the Senate have a vote on these things, all right? And we've got more to do. We've got prescription drug price negotiation. We've got to build out our broadband. We need an infrastructure bill. We've got the Green New Deal. We've got climate change that we've got to take very seriously. But my approach here, it's tough to penetrate the media, is that we're there to pass public policy that Vermonters want and need, and we've got to be reinforcing that every single day. So if we have an impeachment inquiry, that's on its own, but don't let the pedal off the metal when it comes to pursuing these policies that we've been approaching. And I'll just be candid, it's tough to get those achievements covered. Those bills I just mentioned were all passed by the House of Representatives, and many of them, by the way, with bipartisan support. I'm working every day that I can with Republicans to help pass this legislation. I want to impeach the president for the reasons I mentioned, but I want to work with Republicans, I want to work with Democrats, and anybody who wants to make some progress.
Hello, my name is Teddy Wazak from Berry, and I agree with you that it's ultimately a constitutional issue, not a strategic issue on impeachment, although I also agree that we have to win in 2020. My question is based on your personal experience, how much does Nancy Pelosi understand that? Because I understand that she's waiting for impeachment to start from the fever is highest for impeachment, but I agree with you that it's a constitutional duty that we can't just ignore.
I got to tell you, I've been really, really impressed with the leadership of Nancy Pelosi. And she gets it, and she has a different job, because as the Speaker, she's more than anyone else that wants to make the call, and she's got to take into account a lot of different factors. But one of the factors that she's always taken into account is what's the position, what's the view emerging in the caucus? And one of the reasons I spoke out is a way of giving another signal, another data point. But she takes her responsibility very seriously, and I have a lot of confidence in the job she's doing. Thanks. Yes, hi.
My name is Mara Iverson, and I'm from here in Montpelier, and I work for Vermont's only LGBT youth advocacy organization. I want you to know, like, the last time I was in this space, every one of these seats was filled with a Vermont LGBT youth. That was in March for our Leadership Day, and they were being spoken to by representatives who are LGBT, and that was life-affirming and wonderful. And I have to tell you that the other story here is that I am terrified, and they are terrified. And I heard you just talk about LGBT rights, and obviously, that's important to me, but I'm not even there right now, and neither are the kids. The kids are at, are we going to camps? Do I get to live my life past there? So I just need you to know that some of us are life-afraid right now.
Thank you. All right. You're saying that, and you come from a community where there's... Well, I'm just acknowledging what she said. Can you hear me? Is this on? I can't tell.
I can hear what she said.
She was talking about being afraid, and her LGBTQ brothers and sisters being afraid. And what I've noticed, you know, I've been serving in Congress 13 years. It's different this year, this last two years. And in the past, there was a lot of engagement on issues where people felt very strongly, they were worried. You know, when we went through the healthcare debate, a lot of folks were single payer, public option, what's going to happen? It's different now. Enormous anxiety, and it's not just the LGBTQ community, but everyone is insecure where the boundaries have collapsed, where it's not just taken for granted that there's mutual respect. And you can't in a family, you can't in a small community, you can't in the state, make progress on contentious issues without some boundaries, and those boundaries are mutual respect, mutual tolerance, to seek mutual understanding and make progress. And that's what's under assault, day in and day out. So I know you're afraid, but you're not alone in that fear. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Ross, I'm from Plainfield, and thank you for holding this town hall. My question concerns interference with the election. You talk about wanting to respect the results of an election, and that that had been part of your reticence in calling for impeachment before, but there's been substantial evidence of interference in our election over the last two years, confirmed and expanded by the Mueller report. So I'm wondering what your thinking is about respecting the results of elections and how to protect our elections, and how interference in elections will play out in terms of impeachment inquiry?
There was enormous Russian interference in our election, and the president, instead of fighting that, denied it and enticed it. You know, Russia, if you're listening, hacked Hillary's emails, and two hours later, they tried to, they tried to go into her server. And all our intelligence agencies acknowledged it and stated explicitly that Russia was interfering. And in fact, the Trump campaign, one of the things they did, Manafort through Gates, provided a Russian operative with their polling data. Okay? Now, I want to explain this a little bit. It wasn't the horse race question. It was what they call the internals in a poll, and that is used when you're making social media or media purchases or buys or hits. You're going not just, and it was all in the target states. So it was all targeted towards the groups that the polling demonstrated might be the most susceptible to that misinformation. And that was done with the benefit of polling information produced by the Trump campaign. So yes, there is interference. What are we going to do about it? Well, we've got to protect the integrity of the ballot box. I think we've got to deal with the Supreme Court's validation of this extreme gerrymandering. We have to get our social media companies to be much more, much more alert about these bogus, these bogus sites, and it's an all-hands-on-deck. And we've got to make certain that our secretaries, and by the way, Jim Condoleezza has been a real leader in this. About making sure that every ballot is counted and there's a paper trail. So it's really all of the above, but thank you for that question. Yes.
Excuse me, David, next, now, Trump campaign's effectively, plus, the square bottom.
Okay. All right. Let's keep going. I'll talk loud when trying to fix the mic. Thank you. Thank you for that.
My name's Stephanie Fraser, I live in Hardwick, and just a couple, three, four things, and talk to you this quick. Thank you for supporting impeachment. The second thing I want to say is that I don't think it's just Trump. I think Pence needs to go too. Yes. Pence is receiving the presidential daily reports from the day after the Republican National Convention in 2016, emails everything. I make a joke, Pence nay, Pence nuh, it's a new kind of glasses. Never doubt that. I think that, just a couple more things to say. My first political memory is Watergate. My dad was in the military, he came back to the States in '72, '74, runs along with Nixon resigns. Gerald Ford pardons Nixon, and I thought then, at the ripe old age of 10 or 11, and I think so now, it was a mistake. I think that I understand it was a hard decision, and I didn't have to make it like Truman, right? But it was a wrong decision, and it left us in the wake of undermining the basic core tenet of our country, and that is to say that no more kings. And by Nixon getting away with what he got away with, he was a king, and that's what we have right now. No more kings, you know, schoolhouse law. So Trump and Pence, hand in hand, do it, and we have to do what's right. We have to do what's right because our children are looking to us. If we win or we don't win, that's not the plan. And wait, I have two, 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 four things. One, I've often been thinking about, what are we going to do after? You know, post-Trump stress disorder, and I'm on heart medicine, and I take sleeping pills, and I never did this before. I never had trouble sleeping in my life before this man was selected. I believe that there'll be a low in birth rates, we'll call the Trump slump. I think that there's going to be so many deaths that the statistics, statisticians 50 years from now are going to ascribe to the stress in this period of time. And who knows how much this all costs us? So I think that how to solve this is that we need to have like truth and reconciliation commissions. And I've started a new website, truthandreconciliation.us, with the intent of organizing events across the US. Assessment, education, information, opportunity, understanding, A E I O U, it's what we need to do. And the last thing I will, is that at some point, I would love to talk to you about my experience where the town manager of Garden gave away my house without telling us, because there's a big, huge hole in Vermont State statutes.
Go ahead and do that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi, representative, and hi, Vermonters. My name is Chiana. I was born and raised on Southeast Asia. I'm a resident of East Montpelier, and I'm a proud citizen of the United States. Thank you so much for your statement. I think it was particularly brave and it may not be in the dorkery of this moment. I agree, he is a bit raucous. He consistently constructs alternate reality outside of lies. He questions and prepresses in our intelligence agencies, which leaves us all in this haze of confusion. He stokes divisions in this country's people. He's invited, as you mentioned, a foreign agent to meddle in our elections and has done nothing to protect future elections, such that our democracy is being aggressively stolen from the people. This shouldn't be a question of politics. We are democracy built by the diversity of men. We need a leader that respects the dignity of all and strengthens rather than undermines our fragile institutions. I am terrified for the future of this democracy and democracy around the world. Would have my full support if you had.
Hi, my name is Kara. I'm Kara Montague from Winuski. I agree with you that Trump is also divisive and has consistently attacked Americans who are different from him on the basis of their race, gender, sexual orientation, and ethnic origin. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work in opposing his agenda. Winuski is the most racially diverse city in the state and an official refugee resettlement town. In opposing Trump's agenda and protecting our diverse town, will you join the majority, the majority of Winuski and Burlington voters who have consistently opposed the basing of the F-35 aircraft? At the Burlington Airport because of concerns about harmful noise levels, toxic PFAs in the plane stealth coatings, and most importantly, concerns about increased nuclear threats to and from Vermont? Will you help us for this nuclear proliferation?
The F-35 basing decisions have been made. We've got the air guard.
We can say no. We have still.
You can do it.
The states and the senators have said no, the state legislature has said no.
Okay, let me be clear on this. We've got the air guard. There's a new plane, the air guard named Lake. It was a process that I know you dispute, but didn't involve me.
Yes.
Whereby the air, by the, the guard here was selected as the place to base the new fighter jet, the F-35. But let me finish. So that decision's been made. The question now, and I'm hearing from a lot of people who say, just as you have, that they're concerned about the nuclear capability. There's no plans whatsoever for there to be any nuclear mission with that plane in Burlington, so, or in, in the Burlington Airport. Number two, on the noise, which is real, in the, in the imposition that poses on people in the vicinity and in the flight path, that's real. And Senator Lake, Senator Sanderson, I, along with local officials, are doing everything we can to make sure that there isn't a budget, not two years from now, but sooner or later, for there to be mitigation to address those issues. And that includes retrofitting our homes and it also includes, in some cases, buyouts. But I did support the decision that was made to base the plane with the air guard in Burlington.
I just think the majority of people living in the area have opposed it consistently. And for our Trump campaign process, it feels like it's being dumped on us unknowingly.
My name is John Turner. I live here in Montpelier, Vermont. I am a. I'm a white, 73-year-old male who grew up on Long Island and those are the only things I have in common with Donald Trump. I appreciate your desire to pursue what you want to pursue, but I would encourage you to look forward to 16 months of the next election. I'm concerned about doing impeachment here, having lived through the next of time and the Clinton time. And it will become a sideshow, probably can't include all. There's a third of this country who will vote for Donald Trump, as he himself said, if he shout somebody on TV in Times Square. There's a third of Americans, I'd priorly include myself, who will vote for anybody but Donald Trump. But there's a third, at least, of Americans living in states like Ohio, Illinois, Minnesota, Pennsylvania, those classic swing states that have to be won over. And I think our focus needs to be, the man needs to be voted out of office in November of 2020. And we need to do everything as a Democratic Party to ensure that happens. And that's gonna require that we focus our attention on reaching out to white people who study those states I mentioned and swing them by to the Democratic Party in 2020.
That's really well put. I mean, first of all, it takes some hope in this. The most important repudiation and the most important impeachment of President Trump is what voters can do. And think about the last election, 2018. That was essentially a referendum on whether people thought Trump was doing a good job or not. And they, the verdict is very clear. We've got a Democratic House. And by the way, with all the focus on this one, there were many, many Democrats who won in districts that President Trump had won in 2016. So what that tells me is the people you're talking about figured out two things. Number one, Trump was all talk. What he was saying he would do for working people, he failed to deliver on and didn't even make an attempt. And then second, we do have to focus on a legislative agenda. Now, it's tough to penetrate the media on that. But I just went through a list of things that we passed in the House of Representatives, as I mentioned, with some bipartisan support. So the impeachment, whether, what happens and how it takes its course is one thing. But it can never become an excuse for us in the House to fail to have a very aggressive, middle-class agenda that helps poor people, that helps working people, that helps our economy. So I agree with that. Thank you. Yes.
Sue Walbridge, Montpelier. I am a seventh-generation Vermonter, lifelong Montpelier resident. I am a proud descendant of Vermont U.S. Representative and U.S. Senator Justin Smith Morel, a Republican. My cousins, brother DJ and able-morum died in the Civil War to end slavery. I grew up knowing Republican Governor and U.S. Senator George DeAiken. All these people were of great dignity. I believe they would be appalled of this Republican Party and Trump. We were taught that there is a very important interest of government to ensure checks and balances on all. President Trump has destroyed what our founding fathers created. He is narcissistic, meaning he lonely loves himself, not his country, not his base. A psychological examination, not clinical, should be ordered. He is the most significant threat to our democracy. Alliances with Russia and North Korea autocrats, being a racist, mocking disabled, disbanding bonds we form with other world countries. No morals or ethics described by Trump. He scammed people with a fake university and bankrupted many of his own companies. He abuses executive power. He is the worst model for our children with his bully tweets. He brought nepotism into the White House. He is responsible for military lies and yet he goes against the advice of his cabinet and he found a way to avoid going to war himself. We must impeach Trump for the illegal interference. Both during his 2016 run as president and countless other opportunities he has participated in since becoming the president. This Republican Party is not the party of Lincoln. They are enabling this insecure man who acts like and has the vocabulary of a small child. Why? Because they are afraid of Trump and have no backbone. They only care about being reelected to keep their perks. It will be on their shoulders of the weak-minded Republican senators for remaining silent and not standing up for this country. I am for impeachment. Thank you.
Thank you. You could have my job. That was great. But I just want to make one caveat, Justin Morel, because it goes to the question of impeachment of Verinus. Justin Morel was from Stratford, Vermont and was a U.S. Senator during the Civil War. And we may think we have a hard head, but I don't think, none of us think really that it was a more perilous time than our, our country in the Civil War. And while President Lincoln was prosecuting the Civil War, he was also working with Justin Morel to establish the land-grant college system. That happened during the Civil War and it was Justin Morel leading the charge. So we can do tough things together. In fact, that's what Vermonters do, right? You just keep at it. Thank you. Jimmy.
Hello, my name is James Lee from South Brooklyn. And I'm really glad you changed your mind about impeachment. That's really a fantastic point. But Donald Trump, as everyone knows, right now is threatening to escalate or to attack the first-time Iran. It almost happened a few weeks ago. We're seeing much more tension in our, in and around the version of, and the movement of, of ships towards Iran. And so here's something, it's connected with impeachment. We have something we can do. It's gonna be very hard to impeach, get impeachment, okay, it could pass the House conceivably, but to get a conviction in the Senate will be very hard. But there's something one person can do right here in Vermont, and that's you. By refusing to collaborate with Donald Trump in the basing of these F-35 jets in our state. By coming out against the basing under Donald Trump. Why would we give him the gift of basing jets that he will be using? And they, and our F-16s were called up many times for service in Iraq and in Syria and in all kinds of other Somalia. Look, we've gotta stop the F-35 and arming Trump and we can do that right here. And I'm hoping that's something you will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having this town hall. My name is Lynn Wild from Montpelier. And even though I look like a one person, I'm standing here for four other people as well. They could not be here tonight and they had some questions, so I'm going to give you three questions. The first one is, if impeachment does not result in a conviction, what will we do with what becomes of our current president and his already out-of-control behavior? That's the first question. The second question is, what can we do from here in Vermont as citizens to reunite families and to shut down the detention camps on the border? I can't think of anything more important to really exemplify who we are as a people than bringing those families back together. The third question is, what can we do to stop the unraveling of the sensible policies that are in place already to reverse climate collapse?
Number one. Actually, number one, two, and three. Elections have consequences. We have a president who started climate change, denies science, and he's got a veto plan. And he's got a lot of collaborators, Mitch McConnell and others. And we are gonna have to get somebody else in that office who is gonna double down on the urgent need to address climate change. Second, the border. I went, I went, I was one of the first members of Congress to go to the border. It was, it was a Syrian experience and I could hear your voice, the nervous feeling you have about what's happening in your name, in reminding to children in large-scale women at that border. I went with Senator Wright and what we saw, talked about a little bit, was people in warehouses. They were like, oh, Walmart warehouses, nobody knows. And then cages, they really are cages. The most poignant thing I saw, they were separated by age, sometimes by gender, but we saw three brothers and they must have been four, six, and eight. And they have these tiny little mantas that they're lying on. It's freezing there, all right? It's really hot out in Texas, but when you go in, it's like a cooler. And these three kids didn't know where their father was. They came with their father. And they were spoon-style, you know, your kids do that, holding on to one another for dear life. And then we saw, we sat, it was about 11:00 at night and we sat with 10 women who were from Honduras and Guadalajara and told us their starries about coming up here. And one in particular told us about getting your daughter up at midnight. She was from Honduras and tell her daddy, you've gotta go. And the reason they had to go was because the plan was that she was gonna become the quote girlfriend of a gang leader. And her husband had already been killed by the gangs. And she came up here and she was taken in one room and told she'll be right back. And then she came back and her daughter was gone. And she was bailing to help her find her daughter. And she hasn't told about the trip up where they got about two-thirds of the way up and our, the mother got scared. Here in Long Starries, about getting to the border. And she said to her daughter, honey, we've got to come back. We've gotta go home. And the daughter looked at the mother and said, honey, we can't go back. We can't go back. And they came in at the crossing near Bronson. And, you know, whether that mother and daughter have been reunited, I don't know. But what we've done is make it a crime for somebody to knock on the door and ask for help. That's not a crime. Now, let's be clear. There is a crisis at the border, but the answer to that crisis is to not make it a crime to ask for help. The answer to that crisis is not to separate children from their parents. The answer to that. And like, it's not to have, people not even have access to toothbrushes. And we, the, the, a serious president would work with us. You know, there's things we could do, starting with aid to most tribal countries because people don't, people don't. I want my mother to not take her child on a thousand-dollar dangerous journey. People want to stay home. And if what is being characterized by our president is to sell a bunch of gang members and rapists, that affects how we experience them coming. They're, they're desperate. We might not be able to help as much as we'd like, but that doesn't mean we treat them as mean as we would rapists, you know, and criminals. And they have 13 gang members. So we need to be working together on that, but it starts with the president, who's made it very clear that this is an issue that he sees as helping with his divisive strategy. That's what repulses me the most. Politicians, politicians, we care about things, but hopefully we really, what we really care about is people. You know, we're arguing for an issue. Go ahead.
With tremendous respect, I can't wait for the president to change his mind.
All right, that's, here's the question. What can you do? And what I'm seeing when I travel. And what I'm seeing when I travel around, and it keeps me going, because in Washington, we're not going to get that immigration bill passed the president. We're not going to get him to say, oh, climate change is real. We're not going to, we're not going to get him to reestablish our alliances. And what you can do is do things in your own community, the built community. You know, I was with the Wunuski, I was up in Wunuski. I'm talking about the F-13. And all the things that that community is doing with its schools, with revitalizing downtown. Here in Montpelier, things that people are doing. Community groups that get together and they say, you know, right here, right now, I can try to do whatever is within reach to build community and to strengthen connections between me and my neighbors. That matters, and in fact, is what's going on at the local level that makes, is going to get us through what's a pretty dark time in Washington. And in fact, I'm very proud of what this legislature did this year. They passed a lot of good legislation. Well, you know, you never get as much as you want, but it was based on a notion that we're in this together, and that we've got to take a half step, a big step, maybe two steps forward. And that it's worth the effort. And so it matters. And what I want to reiterate is that no matter how dark you see what's going on in Washington, and as I acknowledge, it's not good what's going on in Washington, that cannot become an excuse for you to not act where you can in whatever way you can. So keep it up.
My name is Jesus Kinder, and I'm from Montpelier. So from what I understand and see, it would seem as if you are a big supporter of climate and microjustice, right?
Keep up.
So I asked a representative if he is in fact, you know, believes in climate and microjustice.
Yes.
So how could you support bringing in the F-35? The United States military is, if it were a country, could be in the top order of polluters in the world. We're in a climate emergency. We're seeing, the U.N. has told us, we're seeing one new disaster every week from climate change. We're far above the industrial levels. We've set off on a feedback loop, so we can't go back. We're set in this. Our military-industrial complex is one of the biggest polluters in the world. Not only that, it's one of the world's biggest, you know, state-funded terrorist operators. How could you bring in a F-35? You know, it's clear, you've seen, you've heard from the people in this room, we don't want it, we are against it. How does that happen?
Well, given my internat, if you're talking about climate change, anything, whether it's military or commercial, contributes to carbon emissions. Any car, whether it's a military vehicle or any other vehicle. And have a discussion about what's the proper role of the military? Do we need a military? But not like we have. No, I totally agree with that. And I think most Vermonters do. But on the question of the F-35, that plane was built. The planes that are coming here are not ones that I was promoting. The question then became whether, where they were going to be based, and the decision was made based in here.
I understand that, but we need to be questioning that on this issue wherever we can in an emergency. So would you commit in the future, making every effort you can, like my future, or something like that?
I would definitely commit to trying to agree with you. I can't say I'll always agree with you, but I definitely will. My door's open, I'll answer the phone, and I'd be glad to sit down with you.
Thank you. I was glad to be supported the resolution for climate emergency last week, but, but action towards it.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I can.
Don't pick it up. It's all wound up.
That was cracked off now. Can I do this?
Just unwind it off from the plug.
Yeah, I broke it. Very serious. I could rattle off a lot of things.
What's your name?
Mary. Can you hear me? I could rattle off quite a number of things.
Are you, your name?
My name is Richard Lettsdale Warren. I could rattle off a number of things that indicate that we're preparing for war in Iran. I won't do that, but the biggest one is reactivating the base in Saudi Arabia. The Brits sold the base and several troops there recently. The other thing is, carriers are ready to deploy. Some are already there. And recently, President Trump has designated the Revolutionary Guard as a terrorist organization. That gives him the okay to go ahead without congressional approval to attack Iran essentially, because the Revolutionary Guard is really part of their government. And it's done through the Act that was passed quite a while back. And I know you're working on this, but it's the authorization for the use of military force. Congress sort of gave its power away, and we really have to get that back. So I'm wondering, what are you going to do to get that power back? And, you know, all indications are that the president of the war will be around recess next August. And I wonder if you have a strategic plan in Congress, spoken around this here when that happens.
So Richard, right, as you're in Harvard, we started out and said the two really awesome powers of the House are impeachment and authorization of the war. And Richard's absolutely right. Congress has let that whip. And I've been a constant advocate to restore the requirement of an authorization for any military action. I've got some good news from last week for actions that were taken in the House. We passed an amendment that said the president cannot launch any military attack on Iran without first coming to Congress to get approval to do that, because I share your concern. Now, we got that through the House. We've got Mitch McConnell in the Senate, all right? What we, what I can do as a member of the House is get it started there. Secondly, we condemn the Saudi war against the Houthis in Yemen. And we prohibit it. Again, it's the House, but the president is using bogus emergency authority to sell weapons to the Saudis that are being used by innocent women and children in Yemen. And our resolution that we passed prohibits him from selling those arms to the Saudis. And this is, by the way, as you all know, another indication that the president really has the likes of the press. You know, MBS, Osama bin Sa, Mohammed bin Salman, he's not only on this war against Yemen that has left that country totally destitute and with people dying of starvation. He's the guy who sent the folks to kill Mr. Khashoggi. And why, literally, a bone saw along the way. Why are we dealing with him? So you're right on this, Richard. And the significant majority of us in the House agree with that. And we've backed that up with the force of a House bill. And we've got the assistance of Mitch McConnell. But we've got to do that, and I know you will.
One more question. That decision on the F-35 was taken a decade ago.
Right.
That decision on the F-35 was taken a decade ago. And that's a long time. A lot has changed. We're in a cyberwar now, not a hardware war. And, you know, we could have been a mistake. And I asked you to do that in some commentary. And unless we admit mistakes, we, we have to. So I asked you to look at that.
I appreciate that.
And if it's true, admit the mistake, and let's go on.
My name is Neil Gielba Jr. from Barrytown. I want to thank you for the support of the F-35. Being a veteran, having served in the two military branches, September 11th, being on a plane. But I'd like to get back to what are the high crimes and misdemeanors that you plan to submit in order to impeach President Trump?
Well, if you were here, you heard me.
Yes, I have, but I haven't heard any crimes or high crimes or misdemeanors of any kind.
Well, you know, you know, the Constitution does not define it.
Exactly.
And it delegates the authority to representatives in the House to proceed with impeachment.
Article one. So that's why I'm asking, though, what do you plan to submit as the high crimes and misdemeanors in order to impeach President Trump?
Number one, the Constitution requires that we're all subject to the rule of law.
Exactly.
And the president is asking us, though, he's a rough broad beyond the law, when he completely rejects the R-1 responsibilities of oversight of the House of Representatives. That's when you have somebody who can act with impunity, because there's no check or balance. And the heart of the Constitution is limited power of government, not universal power in anyone or in any one person. Second, all of us are equal under the law and entitled to the full protection of the law. And we have a president who is treating people who he does not like as though they don't have the same status and privilege as everybody else. You can have a fight about how you can get a privilege, but you have to be one person, on the basis of their religion, on the basis of their ethnicity.
Correct. But I still would like to answer, what do you plan to submit? I do not, I mean, he's protecting homeland, he's addressing, I've served with many of those members down in all four of those southern states. I didn't like, got the training before I was going to go ship out Iran or Afghanistan. Many of those individuals are hardworking, and yet it's a never-ending dragon thief. You're not giving them the money in order to help address the problem down there. But I still would like to know what you plan to submit as far as high crimes.
You know, I have to think it was the... Number one, thank you for your service.
Well, I appreciate it.
And number two, I'm going to answer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Skidmore. My family came in 1665. My family was fought in the Royal General War to free us from England. Their ancestors fought in the Civil War. And I think anyone who's been in the military, because I have military in my family as well. Thank you for finally coming to the table and wanting to impeach. But you're a little late to the table, because I have been studying what's going on. And it's not just in this country. It's a global problem. And it's good to be like a journey, when we look back and saw the fascism and everything. And they were, what did you do? This is this time. This is the time when we all have to turn to our family in the future and say, what did you do? And fascism is on your door, when little kids were in cages. And yes, we need to impeach him. We have to let go of the fear. Do you think if the Republicans had a stupidish like this, they would be sitting there cowering and wondering, oh, what happens on a tense, uncertain, free page? Let over it. Do the right thing. Since people have been bringing it up, I am going to talk about the F-35s. I came from Massachusetts to get away from Hoops. And like the president of the South Atlantic School and City Council, she did the same, and she's a military person. We have to stop the F-35s, because if we don't stop it here, where are they going to stop it? It'll be 23 other places in the southern country. The rules of nuclear engagement, if they, if the DOD sends up a plane and says, we're going to go pick up a nuclear weapon and it will deploy it, first of all, you have one guy in his jet. He could go rogue, or she could go rogue. Second of all, in the nuclear war of engagement, when they drop that bomb, whatever the DOD says to drop it, the rules of engagement is that they will retaliate to where that plane, that jet, they're from. Guess what? That's Burlington, South Carolina, Vermont. And I don't know the port of Williston. Do you think that is comfortable for any of us? We have to stop it here. Don't worry that it makes it burny and that they may escape in the past. You probably want to do jobs here. However, it has to be stopped now. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got, we've got a lot for eight. And I promise we finish everybody, but let's, let's move on. Maybe hear from a couple of people, because I'd like anybody who's standing there to have an opportunity to hear. So maybe you could speak, and you could speak, and then I'll answer, and then we'll get through over here. Thank you.
Yeah, seven more.
Thank you. My name is Soli Knight. I live in Burlington. I have several things that I'm deeply concerned about. And I do want, I forever support you and your strong, courageous stand on impeachment of this president. He does not deserve to be in that position. So thank you for that. I'm very concerned about the fear, we talk about fear among our citizens. And I want to speak to the fear that our immigrant farm workers experience on farms in Vermont. We have a nice agency on steroids. People are being arrested. They're afraid to go out and get what they need to live. This is a kind of slavery, a cycle of violence, a dysfunctional violence. And that we need to rein in the powers or do something to go out of place. I'm concerned about the Secret Service in Vermont, because their power, they have powers to arrest people without warrants. And that's very concerning to me. That's a second layer of police power that we are subject to. I also want to speak to the F-35s. I'm very concerned. And I know that there's new information, definitely new information. And I hope that you'll work with people here in the room to see why this new information is important and for us to open our minds and look anew at it, because the future of our county, Tidney County, and Vermont is at stake.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good. Hello, yes, all right. My name is Will Alexander. I live here in Montpelier. First and foremost, thank you for this decision. Thank you for the courage required for this decision. And thank you for the work that you've done at the border, because, because the heartbeat behind everything I heard tonight and everything I've considered saying is the knowledge that there are camps, that there are camps on the border, and that there are children dying there. And, and every time I hear, whether tonight or in national commentary, discussions of strategy and timing and worry and, and whether or not, and the possible consequences of doing the constitutional duty, the only thing I hear in the background is, is that there are camps and that there are kids dying of camps. And I am, and, and my family is Latinx. And, and we came here with three kids. And I am very honored. Thank you for expressing faith in the Speaker of the House. I must say, I don't share it. I, if the Democratic leadership nationally cannot sell the American people on the inevitability of opening even more concentration camps, then what good are they? Any action that happens now and not tiptoeing on a chill between now and November is something that may help a kid in a cage who might otherwise die. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Linda Ravel. I'm the Democratic county chair here in Washington County. My goal is to flip red seats to blue seats and to follow your issues to... My goal is to flip red seats to blue seats, and to follow your issues to the legislature. I would like to thank Peter for all the service he does, but he cannot do it alone. The Democratic Party has a lot of dead women. We need more activists to get involved. The Democratic Party is having its own election in September in your towns. There will be announcements about these elections. Go elect people in your towns that will act on your issues. We need more activists in the party. And it is up to you folks to get off the sidelines and do something about it before we have four more years of Donald Trump.
Thank you.
I'm Kelly Conings, and I am from Fletcher, which is North here, by way of South here, which is Texas. And I lived here 21 years, and I don't sound at all like I have. With that said, I am interested in your stance on Medicare for All. It is my opinion that the private sector and the free market works for some things, but it is brutally always, it does not work for no care. The ACA, or also known as Obamacare, makes some things better, but if it even survives a Trump administration, it is still unportable, and access is becoming more and more difficult. So, we need our elected officials to stand on the side of the people. It's a difficult challenge, we all know this, but it doesn't mean we can prioritize this for a minute longer. And something that's inspired me, and I'm sure everyone has heard it, you know, 50 years ago, our big moon adventure, and JFK saying, we chose to go to the moon not because it was easy, but because it was hard. And I think that we must take the same approach with healthcare. So, just really quick, tomorrow there is a Green Mountain Care Board public forum on health insurance rates. Blue Cross Blue Shield is asking for 15.6% rate hike in the V8.5. It's open for public comment, 4:30 to 6:30, and with an informational ticket against the rate hike starting at 3:30, a month earlier at City Hall. I was going to ask you if you could come and hear the stories of their constituents, but I think you're headed back to DC, so I guess you can't. But if you can come, they need to hear your story.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And the goal of Medicare for All, the goal, by the way, is that healthcare system where everybody is covered, and everybody contributes according to their ability to do that. And that care has really worked for folks 65 and older, and that's why that term has such meaning, because if it works for you when you're 65, don't need sometimes need healthcare when you're 25 or 45. So, that's really what I see as the goal of having a healthcare system where we're all covered and we all pay. The biggest, one of the bigger challenges we have in healthcare now is the cost is too much. It's pharmaceuticals, it's the procedures, it's all of those things, where there's no governmental agency on the side of the consumer, who just has to keep paying, and paying, and paying. And those rate increases that you just mentioned, the room, and nobody can afford it. So, by the way, even employers can't afford it. And a lot of employers really care about good healthcare for their employees. They're getting squeezed because they have no control over the healthcare costs, and what happens? They maintain benefits, but it's the expense of pay, the pay increases. So, you know, a lot of Americans are not earning more money today than they were 30 years ago. So, this is a big issue we'd really like to work with. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Christian Bradley-Dobson, from Tom Berge. Something regarding the topic of impeachment that I don't believe we're hearing enough about is the Immigrants Clause. From my understanding, Trump has received hundreds of millions, hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars from various Saudi government officials through his hotels, other businesses, and obviously, that money's been used to support the genocide epidemic, that's what it is, the genocide. And I don't think we're hearing enough on the immigrants, we're hearing about, you know, should I say justice for the collusion of Russia, but I think the migrants on its own could be -
Yeah, you're right. You're right. So, you know, I have a big family, that Trump Hotel downtown in Washington, right close to the White House, and there's all kinds of foreign folks coming in, paying big bucks, hoping to cozy up to the President. And I have a colleague, one of my favorites, he's on the Judiciary Committee, Jamie Raskin. He calls that Trump Hotel "The Washington O'Malley" room. But thank you for that, that's my point, yes.
Hi, I'm Carol Conley from Essex, I'm the one who wrote this sign.
Oh, that's great, she'll decide.
Carol Conley from Essex, I'm here representing many grandmotherly friends of mine, a large group. Back to the issue of the border for a moment, please. Obviously, concerned about everyone there, but particularly concerned about babies and children. I know it's been slow for people to be able to go in and see the conditions, but once you hear about caged children, and you think about them on the floor with foil blankets, it's hard to not think about that pretty much daily, as we tuck our own grandchildren into their own lovely little beds. And my question is, why hasn't someone at the federal level of the Department of Children and Families gone to the border and pronounced that as the child neglect and abuse that is?
If I had children in my home in a caged room with foil blankets, I would be arrested. Thank you. You're right. You're right. I just want to say something, there are a lot of federal workers down there, this is not what they signed up for, okay? They try to, you know, they have a job to secure the borders, but they are beside themselves, just like you and I are, in what is happening. And they don't have the skills, they don't have the backup, it's not what their job is. This is something where it really is up to the administration to have a policy that's humane, and it's up to Congress to work, but there's got to be a President who isn't using punitive measures as a way of trying to leverage us to vote for whatever he wants. I read these stuff. You know, some of them aren't there, but I gotta tell you, the President's got a lot of power. This isn't just a matter of people witnessing, because there are people who are there. There's members of Congress who've been there, and they're speaking out, and the press is showing some of these horrible scenes. But what's so discouraging for all of us is when you see something that's so transparently is wrong, how does it, how does it continue? That's what you're asking. And that is a question from the heart, and it's the right question. And that's why it appalls me that this policy is in your name and ours, in your name and mine. We want nothing to do with it. So, thank you for speaking out. Thank you. And your last question or commentator, thank you.
Well, you're getting late. I seem to be the last person standing. Thank you so much for this wonderful session. Can you hear me okay?
Who are you?
My name is Robert Leher, and I'm from Vermont, from Berlin. I am a history nerd, and there are three pieces of history that I would like to share with you very quickly. One is that we just passed a commemoration of the one-year anniversary of a secret meeting between Vladimir Putin and Donald Trump in Helsinki, Finland, where they went behind closed doors without witnesses for two hours, and he emerged looking like a steamroller rolled over him. And he proceeded to deny the reports of our intelligence agencies about Russian interference with our elections. That's history number one, one year for that. The other one is 2013, when the Gang of Eight in the Senate passed a complete immigration bill, bipartisan, with 17 votes, and it was on, it went to the House, and John Fainman put his thumb on it and killed him. We wouldn't be where we are today had that bill passed.
You're right.
The third piece of history is, it's been 60 years since we admitted any states, and I think the people of Washington DC and Puerto Rico need to shake.
Thank you. And the last one, we're going to give you a last word. We're going to give you the last word.
Last I can remember, so that's why I think you were like, you were - I don't know. Did anybody hear that? I don't know if it appears. I want to, I want to know, in case I missed it, what ever happened to the situation during the electoral vote? I have nothing about it.
What happened is the electorate won the presidency for Donald Trump. That's what happened.
Is that a big thing, could be this year?
It could be. I mean, look, this is serious business. We've got a divided country, and we've got radical Jerry there, but that election came down to 7,000 votes in three states. That's how it looks at us. But there's something that I'm concerned about. If we have a really close election that we could have, we're going to start hearing President Trump, and he comes on the losing side, he's going to start raising questions about whether it was a rigged election. Heard that before? So, we've got work to do. And, you know, I set out for impeachment, but I am for doing the work that we have to do, because a lot of folks who voted for Donald Trump are hurting economically. They don't think government's working for them. And in fact, a lot of folks who are living, especially in rural communities, you know, where we see it tough to keep our schools open, or agriculture, the area of Vermont has had a real hard time, and it's good people. We come from rural Vermont, and we know how good people are in our local communities. They want to help one another. It's a good day when a local banker makes a loan, and somebody can get a house, their first mortgage, or they can expand their business. They care about that, they work on the volunteer fire department. And our beef is with Trump, it's not with a lot of people. My view mistakenly saw, thought he would help them. He's forgotten. We don't forget that. There's a lot of goodness in this state, there's a lot of goodness in this country. And as bad as the times are now, and as worried as I am about the Arabos and the Democrats, these are the times we're in. And a couple of people ask what you can do. You get it each day, you face that day, and you decide you're going to make the best of it, and you're going to try to do something that helps you to give you a little bit stronger. That's what you do. There's not a big mystery to it. You don't decide when you wake up, and it's dark outside figuratively, you can pull the covers over your head, and you'll try, you keep at it. And I'll tell you something, as hard as it is, and it has been hard in this job, in times past, every time in my own home in Norwich or in Washington, I reach out to somebody else and try to listen, it always is a rewarding experience. We're not going to persuade by luxury. We're going to persuade by listening and hearing, and trying to find some common ground. And you know what is more fun? We don't like to be angry. You know what I mean? We, and that's, we could be clear-eyed about what's going on, you know what? I don't like being angry. I don't like being discouraged. And Vermont is, I mean, look, I would say our jobs, the two jobs I've seen where it's the hardest, Vermont dairy farmers and West Virginia coal miners. And you know what? They work at it, they keep at it, and they've got time to help their neighbors. We just got to remember that, it's worth doing it, even though, as we do it, we have no guarantee of what the outcome is going to be. We do it because that's the way we choose to live our life. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. These are hard times, but we're going to face them. We're going to move ahead, do the best we can. If we make a mistake, we'll adjust, move ahead, and keep going, and remember that we are, every single one of us, we're all in it together. Thank you all.